Thank you very much. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Session on Monday, June 22, 2020. Do I have a motion to open up the meeting?
移到
A second?
Second.
You have a motion at second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to open the work session, June 22, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, the ayes have it. The motion is carried. I don't have to have a... About the agenda. I don't have any questions right now. You want to go ahead and open up, Dr. Kane?
Um, yep. So, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, before we get started, just acknowledge some materials that we have been provided. Thank you, Mr. Pfister, for an updated... It is the budget book, but as you know, we put it out in the beginning and once it's approved, but we have added some comments with regard to conversations that we've had in terms of moving dollars around and increasing or decreasing allocation. So that is reflected in that document. And as well, you have another handout that Mr. Pfister is going to talk with you about. But we've given probably about as much documentation as we have. And I'm going to take the probably out of that. We have given all of the information that we have, responded to all board questions. And at this point, Mr. Pfister is going to come forward to respond to questions. But I really wanted to give Ms. Harper an opportunity to sort of give an overview of what's about to happen tonight. We are here to respond to any questions, but do not have a presentation because at this point, we have shared all the information that we have.
Okay, thank you. And first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming on a Monday. I know our normal work session days are Wednesday, but this is critical since we have... Thank you so much, sir. We have until July 1st to get this submitted to MSDE. So I appreciate everyone taking the time to come tonight. As we kind of put out, we will not be meeting tomorrow. We will be meeting on Wednesday if necessary, just to let everyone know. I would like to get some guidance from the board members. I'm going to go around to each one of them and just ask where they think we would like to start off with this budget, where we could start to get down to the $2 million that we need to get out of this budget. I'll wait for Mr. Pfister. Thank you, sir.
She just gave me one. She just gave you one.
There...
Oh, there's two? Oh, thank you so much.
So, board members, what we would have handed out, four documents. One is the one with the little rings on it is the five-year summary that I believe some of you were working from, from the one from October. So this has now been updated to reflect your budget as of March 4th, what you, as a board, approved. The columns in the center highlighted in blue are the five-year actuals. And then the FY '20 budget, as we sit and live and breathe here for another few days. And then the requested budget. And then the far-right column is the increase or decrease reflected in those budgets. So again, this is the exact format as you were accustomed to, but it's just been updated since the one you were provided in October as our first basic working document. The one with the salmon-ish color is our requested budget. They're almost duplicate of each other's, other than this is the official requested budget document. It does not have the five-year actuals, but it's laid out very similar by the state categories with all the descriptions of the line items. The actual for '19 was approved in '20. What's requested, again, as of March 4th, your board budget. And then the far-right column, again, your requested increase or decrease. And then the two single pages is sort of the document that we've been working from throughout the budget process, that the one without the green box at the upper right-hand corner was your budget, again, as of March 4th. Everything that was requested in addition to the base budget. Then because of county funding, the limitations on maintenance of effort, under Dr. Kane's guidance, the executive team went back and pared down that request to bring to you before a couple of weeks ago what we estimated one of the scenarios as a balanced budget. That's indicated by the one with the green box at the top. And you can see between the two, there's a lot of empty spaces on here. So the description of what it was is still there, but the dollar amounts, of course, are no longer there, which means it's not funded. And then the big delta, so to speak, based on what we seem as must-haves and mandatories and unfunded mandates and whatever else you want to roll them all up into, the caveat is that 27 positions for $1.9 million is the delta that I believe we've been discussing for the last few weeks on how we will to solve that hole.
Do you have that on here? Just...
The big red box.
Big red, okay.
The big red box.
All right, thank you.
So with that, be happy to answer any questions. We can certainly go by any of these documents that you'd like, line by line, if you want to make some adjustments or requests.
There's no doubt that staff went through a lot of work to produce this. I went through without this information and got to $1.9 million in cuts. But I don't know if I read this list, whether I am dipping into lawful, unlawful, and so forth. But I get there. And actually, it's not very hard. Getting employees to accept it might be a bit harder. But I asked Dr. Kane a simple question because I didn't know the answer. Are our employees paid between Christmas holiday and the New Year's holiday? And the answer is yes. But the schools are closed. That is a very logical place to have a day or two of furlough time. Because the schools aren't open, so you don't have that complication. My scenario only has one furlough day, and it's the 28th of December.
Not that...
But I've... There's 11 other things that get me to just about $1.9 million. And they come from an assortment of lists and so forth.
Okay, so we'll go over that. We'll go over that.
Okay.
Ms. Morset, do you have any comments?
My only question was the KOMAR Required Training in Special Ed. Should we have a grant that's covering?
I apologize, I didn't hear you.
The KOMAR Required Training in Special Ed, is that being covered somewhere else? Since it's required?
If it is, where... Which document are you looking at? The big blue sheet?
With the...
Yeah, the... Right, exactly. We'll have to figure out how to get it done because we have to do it.
Okay.
So if there are any savings that we can realize anyplace, then that's one of those areas. We have a variety of unfunded items exactly that we have to do, but there's no line for them. So if ever there is an attrition or anything like that, we tend to fund those required things from attrition. Not the way that it should be done, but because our budget is so very lean, there's no way that we can account for it otherwise, but we know that we have to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I mean, there's a few little things we can go over as far as picking out of small items. But, I mean, the major thing, we've got a gap in here that's not going to be done by $5,000 and $10,000 items. Not that we shouldn't look at them and do all that. I think there's going to be a lot of $5,000 and $10,000 items that come up later on in the school year with what we don't know. So I am not an opponent of furlough days because I think that's not balancing the budget correctly, same as using a fund balance to balance the budget. I think both of those are just Rob and Peter to pay Paul, so I don't go for that idea. I would like some clarification on what was just said. On December the 28th, yes, we don't have school, but our teachers teach 180 days. They're under contract for 189. They might get paid every two weeks, but that's because they're being paid on a cycle, but not necessarily working. So I don't know. I got clarification on that terminology. What I look at is some of our employees are 12-month employees, but our teachers are 189 with 180 mandated by the state. So unless we're going to lose classroom instruction, that comes out of 180. Or we're going to lose other in-service days, goes out of the other nine days. But a furlough day, I will be pleading front with all my board members, to me, it's just Biden time because if you take it this year, you're still going to have it in next year's budget. And we're already using the fund balance from last year again this year, which I have a hard time to agree to.
Told to do it by the commissioners.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, Mr. Smith finished?
That may be my comment.
Captain Kelly?
I... He is right. We can't... I don't believe we can take a furlough day on the 28th.
Never get there.
Because the teachers are working, are supposed to be working. We have a schedule and they're supposed to follow that schedule.
I'm very happy to hear suggestions.
Mr. Anderson?
Not what we can't do, but what can we do?
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
But anyhow, I was... My idea is that I think we do need to go line by line and delete stuff that we need to delete and then see what the bottom line is after that. So I'd like to go line by line on the budget, at least the budget I was working on.
To clarify, the board does not pick when furlough days occur. That is up to superintendent and executive team. So if we do vote on furlough days, they are... It's not under our jurisdiction of when those days get picked and when they get used, just to clarify.
Can suggest.
What do I suggest?
We can suggest.
Well, you can suggest, absolutely.
And offer alternatives if it's not accepted. It's called negotiation.
Well, it's called out of our purview, Mr. Anderson. And if that is the will of the board to go with furlough days, again, that would be up to the superintendent. I am all in favor of going through and taking out some of the increases on things. Everything's necessary to run the system. It's just some things we have got to really look at, close up and say, is it really, really necessary for the 7,700 students of QA CPS? I am not... I don't want to, but I think going back in negotiations, which we may have to discuss later, it may be an option. So from here, Mr. Pfister? Do you... Are we okay starting with this first page?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, Dr. Crane? Where does the staff see we need to do? Why don't you guys go first and tell us what can be done? So we don't waste a lot of time doing things that can't be done.
So I think, Mr. Anderson, and thank you for that opportunity, but we have provided multiple and just added another sixth scenario last time we met. So I think that we have pretty much exhausted the suggestions that we have, keeping in mind that some of these things are closed-session items and could not be discussed during open session. But we have presented, as of last budget, last work session, last week, a sixth scenario. So we have suggested multiple.
Does it total $1.9 million?
Yes, all of them do.
Yes.
Does it require opening up any negotiations?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
And does it have a backup plan if the negotiation stalemate?
Five others. So pick one or two or three or four or five or six, so...
Yes, or yes.
Right, or that.
Okay. I'm open to suggestions on where do you want to go to start? Page three? Of the new book?
It's the same. I went on based on FY '19 because we didn't know what '20 was, how much was actually...
So if I can just preface that, the... Keep in... Please keep in mind, as we discussed last week, the one initial five-year summary document that we distributed as part of a working document in October included some executive team suggestions as some base issues. Looking at that now, some of those are not in your budget to be cut. So we'd have to... So if you see something from that document in October that you cut, I would suggest go to the new one, the one with the big blue line through the center of it, or the blue shaded area, and see if that line still exists there because it's very possible. Ms. Harper, I'll give you an example, the legal fees. We had suggested, based on past history, legal fees should be increased by $25,000. That never made it into your budget because of that. But if you're looking at that document in October, you might say, oh, here's $25,000 towards the cut. It's not in your base budget to be cut. The $25,000 add.
I'm not even pulling this out. I'm going to leave it aside and we'll just deal from here. So I see on this page two that we still have the accountant in here. Is that a new... The new accountant?
So again, this is reflective of... Yes, this is the new accountant, as highlighted in blue. This is reflective of the budget that you passed. In our scenario, one of our scenarios here, the budget, the accountant is off as far as our suggestion. But this is reflective as of March 4th, and at that time, the accountant was still in your budget.
Thank you. So you're asking...
Based on what you... Based on what he's just said, I found I don't have anything on page three.
Yes, yes.
Comparing it to what you just handed us.
Okay, okay.
So this is very helpful. Thank you so much. So any of the... So where are their increases?
Be in that far-right column.
Correct.
The first of every category, of course, is most of that that you're seeing in the salaries and wages, with the exception of this accountant and maybe a few others, handful others, is going to be reflective of the negotiated increases that were negotiated in good faith and signed by this board. So that's where most of that is. I think if you wanted to concentrate, you would look in anything other than salaries and wages, other than, like, we already know the accountant is a position that's going to be coming out. So, you know, I will mark that as indicated on this other sheet to not go forward.
So on this sheet, to clarify, the Virtual Learning Academy, I was incorrect stating that the vote required a supermajority. It did not. It just required a majority. Therefore, the three for aye and the one no and the one abstention, the motion passed, and the Virtual Learning Academy of 158, 80 was rescinded.
Correct. So that would be if that...
That's coming out.
The purview of the board to continue with that, then that would be $158,000 towards your $1.9 million deficit.
Is it one... We're doing one nine or two?
For round numbers discussion, it's two. I mean, we know we're going to have some balancing to do, so...
Okay.
On the Virtual Academy, though, I just like to wait and kind of put that at the end and see where we are before we...
Okay.
That was just to take back our vote. It wasn't too included in the reductions at that moment. So I'm just going page by page. I was looking at page four, both. I got one here. And under Printing and Publishing, I just knocked that out. We had 6615 in FY '19, and I have recommended we drop 4,000. Well, you dropped, take away 4,000 of the 6615. So what does that put us? Your...
So if I can, the 6615 is what we actually spent.
Correct.
Your budget that you would want to cut would be the $15,800.
Right.
So if you took 4,000, then the budget going forward for FY '21 would be $11,800.
And with... So clarified, Printing and Publishing, would that also include all the pamphlets that go out to the students during...
Not in this particular Printing and Publishing. As you can... It's basically anything administrative. The school side would be probably an instruction, the Printing and Publishing there, but this would be on the administrative side, such as the documents you're looking at tonight.
I reduced the $10,800, four more thousand down.
Okay.
Say that again. The $10,800 is right what's in the budget. Am I looking at that?
See, that was... So that was an original cut back in...
15,8, I'm sorry, 15.
15,8, and you want to bring it down to six something?
So we actually raised it up from the budget that we made in the...
No, ma'am.
Original October budget, it was 10,800, and now it's 15,800.
After a $5,000 cut. But that $5,000 cut never was presented in the board's budget as a cut. So in essence, what the board approved in this line was $15,800. So now you're asking to take it down by 4,000? Or do you want to take it down to the 6,000?
9,000.
By 9,000, okay?
But so I'm straight. Last... Our current budget was 15,800. We did not raise it. We just left it status quo for the new budget. And now you're suggesting we lower it?
My question is, what have we spent so far to this date and this year, this current year? What have we spent?
I could certain... Well, actually, today, my financial systems had to hiccup, so actually, I really can't look as of today. But I could certainly get that information for you.
Let me ask you a question. And the future, we don't understand or can't commit to, but there's just as good a chance with everything going on, we're going to have more publications to get information out to the public than less with the new changes we're going to have at our new school year because it's not going to be as normal. So I have no problem lowering it for, but I don't know if we're beating a dead horse on that one, too.
Yeah. So hold up on that. I agree. We're going to have to... Let me put a note on that and see where we are at the end. I mean, $9,000 is not...
It's basically bringing back to '19. But yeah, we don't know about '20.
We don't know.
So I just went with that.
There's so many variables in FY '21.
Too many.
And as I've reminded of the board, you know, the small cuts, yes, they add up to quite a bit, but there's the small things that we don't know about that these cuts would help offset. But we'll deal with that when those issues occur.
Okay.
On that exact line item, though, you all originally thought we could reduce the 5,000, and we decided not to for some reason.
Yeah, it just never made it in, for whatever reason, through our discussions and producing the superintendent's budget. Those couple little items did not make it through.
Okay, so I just wonder what was the reasoning that the staff could do 5,000 less and at least 5,000 we could come down? I don't know why I missed that one. We would have grabbed a... I would think we'd have grabbed one that you all recommended as a reduction.
I will grab it now.
We were just looking for savings. We went through the whole book line by line, just like you're doing right now. We were looking for savings.
I see it now. Thank you very much.
I guess my thought is you all, during your looking for savings, that that might be somewhere you could actually accommodate that. So I'm up for that. We could just move to five instead of nine.
And of course, that was pre-COVID.
That was pre-COVID.
Okay.
So is this one of those line items? Should the schools go over in budget in this particular, that this could help them?
Not without a categorical transfer.
Okay.
Yep.
You could do a transfer to help that.
We certainly could, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
So if we took...
But in that... I'm sorry. In that realm, you know, other instructional areas, you know, with the software or substitutes or any of that, it would not require a categorical transfer. So it might be an easier move if they were to go over in Printing and Publishing and we had some mentor dollars or some tutor dollars or something that we didn't spend, we could just transfer that. Here, taking... I'm more concerned about the category than I am the line. You know, printing to printing to printing is fine. I'm more concerned about the category and not having to ask for a transfer between categories. We can handle it within.
Okay, thank you.
So you have an issue going between categories?
Not an issue. I mean, it requires your approval and it requires county council approval. If I can handle it within the category, I would much rather do that.
True, true.
I was just thinking, safety net, in case they go over and not spending on this side.
Gives us two options. We can either find it from with Instruction, or we could certainly look in other categories, like we've had to do in the last couple of years with transportation. We had to look elsewhere to balance that.
I don't mind that going down 5,000, just to get a starting point. I understand. It's nickel and diming.
So are we reducing by 5,000 or the category or that line is 5,000?
Reduced by 5,000.
Reduced by 5,000. Okay.
Let's see. There is still office equipment in here of 2820. Page six.
Yeah, we've had several requests from some of our schools, some of the front office area furniture for visitors, specifically Suddersville Middle School and Suddersville Elementary School. I've requested all year and I've held them off because we just haven't had the funding. And we could certainly look to use that, or again, that's 2820 that could be cut, your discretion.
I know it's...
How long does that equipment last?
Well, it depends on what it is.
Well, we've steered...
It's in the capital budget, and it doesn't belong in the operating budget. It should have been put in the capital budget. If it was there and got cut out, that's a different story.
It depends on the cost of it.
What's a textbook cost?
Yeah.
Well, the textbooks are in a total category, so we're not going to buy just one textbook. So we look at textbook adoptions.
Well, let's just...
If we're... But if we're talking about that, we could use this to do the school... I mean, we've also got the schools. I would prefer not to, you know, say, oh, let's not cut that because we'll give it to schools. It reads here that it's going to the central office. So I don't think we should keep... We're not in a position where we should keep things in there just in cases. I just don't think we're in a spot to do that right now. I think... I'm trying to find it. I think under Instruction, we have furniture for the schools, too, right? I'm going to do that. I just haven't gotten to...
There's no budget for that.
Yeah, there's...
Page 18.
We have another place we've got furniture operations. Anyhow, I'm not down to that yet. I'll find it.
Yeah, that equipment is out.
You're taking that 2820?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, there's the instruction equipment to add, replace furniture in the schools is gone. And it's out of the capital budget, I do believe, too. Is that correct, Mr. Pender?
I think...
Did we take out the cafeteria tables?
No, that was in the cap... That wrote it was in the capital.
Cafeteria tables, no, it's in the capital budget. Has been removed.
As we go through this, there will be some savings at year-end because of energy costs we didn't spend this year and a few other things that's in... That department... That, to me, could be earmarked for somebody's one-time uses for that department.
Yeah, and we can go over that again. We did share a bit of information about what we estimated our savings to be and what we would be doing with that, but we can take it step by step.
Well, not step by step. I don't want to micromanage that.
I mean, that's very valid.
What I'm thinking is if that department saved money by reducing costs, some of their own brilliance and some of because we weren't open and we saved $100,000, just picking a number, then that money could be earmarked to chairs and whatever they feel they need that was not put... But it was taken out of our capital or something.
Well, that's a question I had about our ending fund balance this year.
Yeah. So... By the way, we could... Find the document that we said we were going to do.
We talked about that, Mr. Pfister.
Fund balance, we're still estimating around a $600,000 fund balance. I still have some credit card bills that are outstanding, still waiting on a utility bill and just the end of the year stuff. My suggestion, again, would be to let that roll. And then we have a lot of flexibility, whether we use it on the capital side or on the operating side for next year for the things that just pop up that we don't know. I don't want to, you know, have a fire sale and just go out and spend some things, you know, and then next year, we need it for sanitizing supplies or...
A new children like we had to this year.
Yeah, or the refrigeration equipment or any of those things. So, I mean, we only have $1.1 million in our fund balance that we could go to. And, uh, you know, some of the recent things that have come across my desk, I mean, we're looking at millions of dollars to open schools, and it's just not in the budget. I mean, that's, you know, so that would be my recommendation, but, um, certainly, um, I don't think we would want to spend it down to the $78,000 that we had last year.
And didn't we produce, um, a document with some of those savings and, because we were asked about that?
Yes, um, it was right around June 1st, I have a copy here, I think we, I have $670,000 is, is what it was, um, from across all board. But keep in mind, it was also offsetting the, which you approved last week, the, um, to help offset the overage in transportation.
That's what I.
And one of the other categories.
Thank you.
And certainly, my idea was not to spend the money just because we have it.
No, I, I understand.
Well, my idea was that if it's saved in that department, the first priority should go to that department, that's where it was originated from, that's where it should go. Then we, then we also, under the direction of everybody in staff, that we put it in the most appropriate place, but that was just my suggestion.
Thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Pender would appreciate that.
Mr. Fister?
No, anybody can, there's all kinds of departments.
What was the biggest increase from last year? And wasn't it life insurance premium year to year? Wasn't that a huge jump?
Generally, salaries, of course, are our largest, followed by health insurance.
Our plan.
And then for 21, yes, there was a, basically a 35% increase in life insurance.
And there's also likely big jump in health insurance premium. And while I was county commissioner, there was a huge jump in the pension cost. These are things the fund balance should be saved for, because they gotta be paid, and if there's not money around, we're in trouble. I'd almost want to see a fiduciary account set up so it can only be used for benefit increases.
Can we do that?
But that's a whole nother.
We have that through the ESMEC Health Alliance. We have a fund balance just in the alliance itself that's used as a rate stabilization fund, which we tapped into this year to keep our rates at 6%.
So I'm to page eight, and I need to clarify, I'm sort of, because I got, we skipped page five. Okay, page five. Sorry. Nope. Sorry, page five.
Yes, I'm sorry. I have a question I had asked on the board member expenses. I know we have our stipends, and I asked what the MAB dues were. I'd sent an email.
Did you not get that last week, that document?
I didn't, oh, maybe you gave us the document, I didn't, I don't remember.
Didn't, I thought I, I thought we handed that out. It was the answer to your questions?
Yeah.
Hang on a second, let me look on here.
No, I, I think I asked.
Yes, this one here.
Mm-hmm. Is it on there? ABs?
And the consortium, blackboard. I did not ask that question, sir, so no, I don't have it on.
I had asked that afterwards.
I asked, I asked for actual cost of meetings in every category, but I didn't know if that included the board members' meetings. I apologize, Mr. Fister.
That question, apologize.
No, it's okay.
You got a lot of questions to answer.
We have, we've had a long night.
If you want to move on, I will, I will get that for you. I know I have, I've answered and information should be.
We were just wondering if we could take the board expenses down.
Now, matter of fact, uh.
You and I talked about that.
President, we talked about that almost a year ago, and with the exception of your, your stipends and the couple conferences and, um, the MAB dues, that pretty much eats up all of that. As you can see, I mean, look at your history there, 38, 36, 41, 35, and 48, it's very, you might have a little bit of a conference thing of two, $3,000.
We did not have the conference this year, so, you know, we shouldn't have spent that. It was.
Again, it's only like grand.
Yeah, and so I wanted to take that out for next year too, because it's all gonna be virtual. I wanted to let you know that when we just.
They're still gonna probably charge you to attend the conference, though. That's what we're finding out, even though we're not spending the hotel or the travel just to attend the conference. These, these, these companies have got to make their money, so they're still gonna charge you, I'm not saying MAB, but I'm just saying some of the other things that we've looked into next year already, there is still a fee to attend the virtual conference.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind, but that, the MAB conference is gonna be virtual. I don't think MAB's gonna charge us.
Probably, and that's why I said MAB might be the exception, but I will.
We could take that out.
Okay, well, let's hold on to that just as a.
And the year before, I mean, the only cost was a hotel, which I didn't, personally, I was the only one who went, and the hotel, there was no hotel, I just drove back and forth because it was local, and I didn't make any claims on mileage or anything. So that was kind of zero for that MAB conference. This one coming up will be zero also.
Well, getting to meetings and conferences on here, same page, um, we have $9,000 there in meetings and conferences. Don't you agree that most of the meetings are gonna be in, by Zoom, or can we take that down even more, or we, because I'd asked you about it flat across the board, and you gave me.
I took 8,000 off of that line, um.
Meetings and conferences in every category at 48,000.
What we spent, yes.
To date. So if you take. But across the board out? Leave something there in each category?
We can do that, you're doing a.
Or are we doing a disservice?
Uh, MAB dues, um, were about 19,000, 18,000, 724 for FY20.
Does that include our, our insurance too? 19,000?
It, dues, that's, I think it's only.
Right, this is just the dues.
19,000.
Mm-hmm.
But that makes that a $3,000 savings.
That's required, isn't it?
It is, well, yes. That's fine, then that, that leaves a $3,000 savings.
Well, let me just ask one question on this, meetings and conferences. I'm looking back at 15, we were at 12, then we were six, then we were nine, then we were 12, then we're 15, now we're back to nine. I, I think it's all well and good to look and think maybe next year we'll do more virtual, and it might, we might save 1,000 or $2,000, but the following year we might not. If we, if it's, if we don't use it, we can send it somewhere else, but if we have it in there, it is a placeholder for something that's gonna happen at, in a short period of time, and it doesn't look like it's drastic, it looks like it's gone down 3,000 since 15 and stayed pretty stable.
So some of those are related to, you know, where the conference is held and the amount of travel, and, but keep in mind, the area in white is what's budgeted, not what's expensed.
Understand.
That's why I asked the general question of across, in all categories, we've spent 48,000 to date. That's with only, you know, three quarters of the year being in school. Just wondering if we just went ahead and took 40,000 out across the board, and then they could divvy it up among each category, then leaving something there. Is that.
How much did you say it was worth?
It's 48 that's been used so far, and, and budgeted, I think it's like 60,000 across the board, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we just take 40,000 out of meetings across the board, that way there's at least something there if they need something. Right, I mean, just across the board, not, not going to admin, not going in instruction, not, just across the board, and that way you can.
Just cut it 25,000 dollars and let them divvy it up.
Okay, she said 40.
I said 40.
So I agree.
Cut it 25.
It's a good number, too.
Okay, Ms. Moore said 40, 25. I'm asking all the board members.
I would say 25, because we don't know what we're returning to in the fall.
Mr. Smith?
I'd go along with that.
25?
Mm-hmm.
Fine. Thank you all. And just for clarification, we're just gonna do one big motion on all of this, rather than nitpicking it.
Then I'd like to note, board member expenses, to subtract that by 3,000.
Okay.
MAB's 18, we're 18, the stipends and 19 is maybe.
Okay, so 3,000 from board member expenses.
And the stipends are required.
Right, right, that's 18, that's in the law. Um, let me see, I had more on that one page.
Okay.
Subscription dues, um, I want to see what you ended up with.
We had.
Eleven. It went up to, I mean, it went up, I think I put it down, take away another thousand. I'm putting it back to FY19 unless, do you know what the actual is on that?
Yeah, there was an increase in a due, a due that we need, a subscription we needed for.
I'm not gonna have actuals as of we're sitting here.
We asked that back in, we asked that back in January, and it went up for a reason.
And it, okay, let's just skip that.
What line, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, it's page five, subscriptions, but you answered that back in January.
Yeah, it has, it's, it's still $11,000.
Yes, because there was an increase in, in one of them, and I, I apologize, I don't have it here.
So I'm sorry, you, so we cut back 40,000 on meetings and conferences?
25.
25.
What about mileage and travel? Let me skip that one. That's another one I think we ought to have a lump.
Across, so I asked that question as well. So actual cost of mileage and travel in every category so far this year is $65,000.
What's the total for?
So I think it's across the board, it's like 100,000, across, all the cross, all the categories.
Yeah, I didn't put that in your response, what the budget amount was.
Well, that was my calculation, I apologize, it was my.
Yeah, we, we did see some, obviously, we didn't have teachers going, um, between the annex and the high school, we didn't have the home hospital teachers, uh, going out to student homes, so obviously, we experienced.
Correct.
Less this year. Again, caution to the wind, what is next year? Are we gonna be traveling more? Because we might have to be doing some interventions or, uh, other things. It, again, it's that unknown, but we can certainly do.
The teachers that go between the high school and, and the annex are, are given a mileage?
Yes, ma'am. By IRS rules, they are traveling from one location to another, they're entitled to reimbursable mileage.
The only place you don't get mileage is going from your home to your workplace and your workplace to your home.
You're also claiming on your taxes, so, and you don't have to rebook.
Okay, so.
Like mileage and travel, I think we should take some out of it.
So my point was that, uh, three quarters of a year, it was only 65,000 used, so if we only take 25 out of that category, it leaves you something.
But that particular category, keep in mind, we're paying it one way or the other, because it's reimbursable mileage. It isn't like we use, I mean, that's where your meetings and conferences, like if you were going to hotel or, or, or airfare or something, your mileage and travel, probably a little bit of misnomer, it's really mileage, so we're gonna pay it anyway.
Okay.
But we could certainly cut it, but we're gonna.
Also goes to meetings, this goes to local and state meetings.
Yes, so it, like I said, it's basically mileage.
I'm sorry?
How was the mileage report? Is it on the expense report?
Yes, it is.
And, and somebody signed it, I guess, in appropriate.
Four approvals.
54.8 cents per mile.
Whatever the IRS rate is.
Yeah.
And if someone in my office, it will actually deduct portions of miles.
But I wanted to make sure that it correctly put.
It's analyzed quite a bit, yes, sir. I can say that, I, I've seen adjustments of .2 miles.
But because of this budget, these last couple months, we haven't had some expenses, which will be a higher fund balance for us next year, which hopefully will be back to normal, which we probably won't be September the 1st, we will have those expenses, you know, on a full year basis. So if we cut something out because we didn't use it all this year, it can go into fund balance, and we should be, we should be earmarked for that. But that doesn't mean next year, when we have, if we have a whole year that's complete, and we might have even more travel between schools if we do an, an AB program where teachers have to go from one school to another, that's gonna be a whole nother issue for this staff to think about.
How many categories are there, five?
Fourteen.
Eighteen categories.
But not all, you, you mean, as far as.
Yes.
Fourteen, but not all of them have similar things, like fixed charge just doesn't have mileage and travel.
So my, my idea was just to take $20,000 across all the categories, I would, they're leaving something there.
Okay.
And then we don't have to sit and do this at every single page, we come up with mile and travel.
Okay.
20,000?
But how, how can you cut it without knowing how it's going to affect the operation?
That's why we're leaving most of it in the budget for Mr. Fister and the exec team to figure out where it goes. Only cutting the increases. Any other page?
Yes, on the same page on recruiting, 8,500, in that, um, it, in 19, we did, we spent 6522, we're asking for 8,500. We don't know what we spent this year, but I just recommend we cut back, I cut back 1,000 on that. That's, um, the kind of money that's optional for us to use, and we're in a spot where we have to, we have to cut things back, so that would be my recommendation.
Are you suggesting a hiring freeze, therefore we won't need this money?
No, I'm suggesting 1,000 off. This is a money you spend for recruiting.
But are we sure that money was spent for recruiting, or there was some ancillary stuff like publishing, something about us and so on, that?
Sure, that's in there too, but I'm just saying we cut back 1,000 dollars.
But if, but if you look at our five-year average, we're well below that at 8,500.
Way below.
Way above, I'm sorry. Way above? Expenditures are above, or you're saying the budget is below?
On recruiting, I see 9.6.
Yes.
10.3, 9.2, 14.3, 6.5. Last year, we were 8.5. If, I'm just doing a quick number averaging that, it looks like 8.5 is a, you know what I mean, we're not, we're averaging that over the five years. I mean, we, we, we went down, it looks like from year 18 to 19 drastically, from 14.3 to 6.5.
It'll also be influenced based on what happens to the specialists.
We will talk about closed session items. I say just leave that alone for now, please.
And then professional improvement was the last one, I don't know where we ended up saying.
Remaining flat.
Or support staff.
That's flat.
To attend seminars and in-service training. That's a huge difference there from 800 to 2,500, unless there was a specific class they're gonna take. I thought that was a pretty big jump.
So just to, just to reset the bar a little bit, Cap Kelly, what you're seeing there is what was actually spent, this budget could have been 2,500 for the last 10 years. So you're not, you're not, it's just been flat, it's just last year, we didn't have something to go to, so, um, it was only 803, whatever department used this, um, go to the year before and they used every bit of it. So I guess it depends on the seminar that might be happening that particular year, but it's not that we increased the budget from 803 to 2,500. We're sitting at 2,500, we're requesting it stay at 25, or what you approved as a requested budget, that it stay at 2,500, but certainly use the actuals to gauge, uh, future expenditures, if you'd like.
We're not sure what the actual is, right?
Not. Not for each one of these specific line items, no, I don't have access to my financial system at the current, current moment.
The average of that is like 1,200?
Well, if you're looking, I'm just looking at actuals for 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. If we're working recruiting, we spent 9.6, 10.3, 9.2, 14.3. Last year, we spent 6.5 in 19. Last year, we spent 6.5 in nineteen. This year, as John says, we have not come to our thing. We have eight-five budgeted, which when I see what we spent over the last five years, that seems like a realistic average of what we've been spending.
I'm on the next line, I'm sorry.
You're on professional, you're on professional improvement? Okay, we spent three-three, one-nine, 654, $2.4 and 800. You know, fifteen, we spent more than that. And the other three, we haven't, well, eighteen, you were pretty good, John. You spent everything but $21.
And we agreed to move on because...
Well, that's nine, okay.
Just agree to move on. Try to find some other real cost savings. I understand it's a thousand, it's a thousand dollars. Just keep it on our back burner that if we need another thousand dollars, that's where we are.
Ms. Harper, if I could revisit recruiting, there's no reduction in recruiting? Did I hear that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. H six, we've already addressed. I see the Eastern Shore Consortium hasn't gone up in five years.
Correct. Correct. It's actually costs more, but because we're the fiscal agent for that, we're flat at $10,000.
That's fabulous. Okay.
But that is actually off the budget, correct? According to the scenario one?
No, because scenario one is only, for the increases.
Okay, okay. So mid-level, I see on here secretaries. So we had had a discussion about the athletic secretaries? Is that?
Retirements.
Retirements there? Is it? I'm not on any page at the moment, I'm just asking for clarification. Is that something we talk about in closed session or can we discuss it here?
Closed session.
Thank you so much. Okay. I'm at page nine, is anyone else that far up? Just keep moving. Okay, that's fabulous. Page 10, leaving office supplies and postage alone because we have no idea.
This is the schoolhouse. This is your front office at your schools.
Yeah, because we have no idea about what's going to happen with that. And page 11?
One question I have is subscription and dues again. We had, we had approved 2020, 11,500, and then we requested 7,500. Wait, I don't know where that ended up. 11,500.
There was no, in your budget that you approved in March, there was no reduction to that line.
But you all had recommended a $4,000 reduction, so I recommend we take that.
What page are we on?
Page 11, under subscriptions and dues.
There was something else in that category you had talked about in January. Reason why it was, had increased 5,000 by 2020. There was some reason. I can't remember. So just take, you're taking 5,000 from there?
The 4,000, basically, that they recommended back in October that we subtracted.
So just 4,000?
Right, just four.
Okay.
And the meetings, we've already touched that. Are you keeping tabs of where we are?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I had under, on page 14, I think I had asked you about other instructional positions.
Yes, so the 122,000 reflective here is still the hundred for the minimum wage. And I've not had an opportunity to go back and recalculate that. And honestly, it's going to be difficult because we didn't have those people working since April. So it'll be, it'll be a rough estimate. There could be some savings there. That was just basically what it cost us the prior year. I think we were within $1,000 of the prior year. The same amount goes up. But again, it's one of those variables. We don't know where we're going to be, what the temporary help situation is going to, whether the need exists, increased or decreased. So, but that's, that's 100 of the 122 there and...
Okay, so on here, where we have temporary help and minimum wage, that is where this is.
Yes.
On page 14.
Yes, yes.
Is it prudent to take out 50,000 just for right now to see where we are?
Certainly do that.
I mean...
It's prudent to take it out.
Then to see if it's...
But where are you going to get it from if you need it?
Part of this raise, though, was bringing people up to minimum wage and then it was bringing other people up even higher than that. And how did we make that decision? How much people would get more just to, because they're no longer at minimum wage?
Generally, we try to keep it consistent. If one step was 5% higher, or one hourly wage was 5% higher than the next one, then we would just continue, perpetuate that. If this one came up to where this is, then we would raise this one.
Is that where you made that decision on the 122?
Yes. Well, it was, again, the 122 is based on prior year's history because we had a full year. This year, I don't have a full year to compare that to, but that's where the 100,000 came from.
But you stop it at somewhere. That's for minimum wage people and hourly.
Yes, because there's still a gap between the minimum wage and then our benefited employees.
These are non-benefit employees.
Yes, sir. And substitutes, but that might fall into that minimum wage arena.
Okay. So just for right now?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand.
And the staff development activities was my, another one on that was, I don't know, in the, followed along with Mr. Smith. Maybe that shouldn't be changed.
I just hear we cut $50,000 out of next year's budget because we didn't use it because of COVID in this year.
No, that's not it at all, sir. So do you want to take out the 18,000 increase on?
On staff development?
On staff development?
Yes.
Just take the increase out for now? And I believe on one of the pages, we had discussed the new teacher mentor program of 50,000. Is that also something that we?
Different document.
It was a different document, but we had, we had discussed it. So is that something?
That was one of your scenario cuts.
So could we offer that now as a scenario cut? 50,000, new teacher mentor program?
That's a new position.
No, it's not a position, it's a program.
Program, okay.
Let me just look one second if you don't mind.
And back up one page, we skipped 13. I had had down the teacher subs, I wanted to find out more about that because that's 100,000. Maybe it isn't, I'll check my new page. Is that a 100,000 dollar?
No, if there's a...
No, you took that off, never mind.
Yeah. Now, the 100,000 was the note from what you approved as FY '20.
All right, sorry.
Um, Ms. Harper, I'm going to put the 18403 on there. I just want to make sure some of the information I have in front of me, that it isn't part of the 50,000 reduction we talked. I think it, I think it's separate, but I'd like to double check. But I have it on the list.
Thank you. And under the, under the teacher substitutes, you and I had talked about that. We were only at like, we're substitutes.
Yeah, if I did a simple calculation, I think we would have been overspent in that. If we took that divided by the number of days we were in school versus the rest of the year.
If we had stayed the rest of the year, we would have stayed at this number of 600,000, almost to like the penny.
Almost. Yes, ma'am.
So there's no increase there, so, you know, I just agree to leave that alone?
Yeah, I agree that we did not increase it on this new page.
Okay. So page 14, we're already through that. Page 15, we needed the microscope repair and the band equipment.
Yeah, that's brand new. That is one of the cuts that's off of your scenario that had been requested and has since been cut.
It has been cut.
In this scenario. I mean, you could certainly put it back, but as far as that 1.9 million or $2 million number you're looking into, the 6,000 that's in this document has already been used towards that.
Okay.
New, this is a new item, right? Okay. The other one is the EO, equal opportunity school consultant. I recommend we pull that out. Wait, what did you end up with, 48,000? Okay, what is the 48,000? Because the original was 33,180.
The other $15,000 was transferred...
To mid-level.
To mid-level, and I want to believe... My mind slips. For 2021, we needed to transfer 15. It's not an increase. It's, you'll see a reduction in one of the other areas to properly align it from the state category. I want to say it was in instruction and, I'm sorry, mid-level administration, $15,000 that needed to be moved in instruction because of the basis of the professional development. It was for teachers, it was not for assistant principals.
As your sheet before said, that it was moved out of this category, out of instruction to mid-level management, which is what ended up a $15,000 so-called savings in just a movement of the money on the October sheet you gave us.
Let me pull that up, I'll look at it.
What are you, where am I? The consultant, the note on the October one said 15,000 was transferred to mid-level administration.
So out of the 48,000 that's on here is 30,000 as to equal opportunity schools?
No, that's a side issue. The 33,180 is what ended up requested in 2021, but on this new sheet, that 15...
Yeah, the 15 was not...
Not taken out.
Not taken out, you're right. And it was not added, because I went back and looked, it's not added, so...
So is that where?
This sort of reset the bar. I would say that, again, just like some of the other cuts that was not moved, that we did not take the 15,000, but it should. But it's only going to be an add back to mid-level administration. But I have to look at some prior notes to see exactly what that was for.
So it doesn't go anywhere?
No, it doesn't. It's just between the two categories.
Yeah, but that category is going to end up 33,180. And what is that, 33,180 consultant bias?
I believe that is the equal opportunity schools contract.
And that's the program I was thinking of dropping for 33,000.
So question would be, how much are you, rather than call out equal opportunity schools, which is a program that keeps us trained and helps, well, keeps us trained, but provides professional development for us, works with our high school teachers to ensure that our students of color and students who are living in poverty have equal access to advanced level courses. I think rather than call that out specifically and say that's not important, that you talk about the amount that you want to leave in that line and let us decide how we would like to allocate those dollars.
And if that's the case, if that's the only thing that's there, then...
I'd like to reduce that 33,000. If that's all that's there, then are you going to get another program to put in there? I mean, I, all I'm saying is, I know that, I understand that program. I have all the paperwork on it. And as I understand it, it was a program that gets the students that wouldn't ordinarily do dual enrollment or wouldn't ordinarily do an AP class, and it works to encourage them to do that. And we've been doing that now for a couple of years. And they, they understand the program now, so I don't see the purpose in continuing to have a consultant on that. Because I think the counselors are now trying to get the kids to do that, whoever they are. And I think I'm, I think we're there, is my...
I don't, but I don't get a vote, so... But like I said, rather than decide which program is a higher priority than another, if you think about the amount of money that you want to leave in that line, then we'll take care of the rest.
Okay.
No, okay, my point is, it's not, I think we're done with that line.
I don't.
Okay. Ms. Smith, Ms. Morsett, inter out.
Are we talking about consultants in that line there?
Yes.
I'm going to go back to this other thing. And I, look, I'm going to be the first one, we need some major cuts, so, and this is a start. But we're at 79, 61, 79, 24, and 70 actual. We're only looking for 48 this year.
38, 33,180.
33.
It's 33.
There's a 15,000 deduct that will move to a different category, so that...
One contract for 33,000 is what we're looking for.
And the state pays the other half of it.
Yes.
It's a matching.
They match, right? They match, but we still, 33,000 comes out of our budget.
Ms. Morsett, yes or no?
No.
Well, I started this, I said we ought to take the money out and let the staff sort out what it is that needs to be done. Because I don't think any of us are totally aware of what has to happen, what'd be good to happen, what's legally responsible. I say it stays in.
Mr. Smith?
I agree with that.
Stays in? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Anybody else with page 15? Page 16, materials of instruction. And I think I had asked you...
Can I clarify, we're staying at the 48,180?
It's 33,180, it will be moved.
Oh, like the, from the October, okay.
Yes, it's 33,180 on that line item. So on page 16, a materials of instruction, I had asked Mr. Pfister. Oh, I had only asked you for special ed, I didn't ask you across the board. Sorry, sir. And this is $97,000 increase on this line item. We have no idea what we're going to need for next year.
On your questions, Ms. Harper, question number three, I did list.
Oh, you did, you did, thank you so much. But again, that's only three quarters of the year.
Yeah, schools, I mean, this is, this is hitting the classroom.
Yeah, so I had asked materials of instruction increase, or what we had paid to date in the three quarters of a year, $595,000. If we had gone all the way to June, I mean, certainly 704,000 would have definitely been used. And we have no idea about next year. And it's at $97,000 increase. Does anyone have any suggestions?
What's the $100 per teacher?
Yes, ma'am, that was negotiated. FY '20 was the first year where we're paying every classroom teacher $100.
Oh, so that's reflected in this line item?
It was reflected in, reflected in the approved budget, yes, ma'am.
In the negotiation, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think one thing we learned, that when we went to virtual learning, after a week or two, a lot of parents started requesting packets. It increased substantially. And if we go to whatever option or anything less than normal school September the first, there's going to be all kinds of things that when students aren't in class, things are going to have to go home with them. So I think that's a slippery slope to change too much right now. Because I think we could have a lot of expenses. If your students going every day are going to be out for a day or two, materials might have to be sent home that we have, that, you know, we don't have for right now.
Ms. Morsett?
We learned a lot.
This line I would not touch.
You don't want to touch, got it. Jameson, you want to touch? 97,000 in materials instruction increase.
Which line?
Uh, page 16, materials of instruction, there's 97,000 dollar increase.
Looking for the number 97,000, I'm not...
It's on the side.
Oh, I see, it's just the whole...
Yes.
Adding of that.
I mean, that's, that's...
Well, 30,000 of them should stay, for sure. I find it difficult to cut $30,000 out and leave $60,000 to train athletes.
This is in materials of instruction.
Materials and instructions.
Yes.
16.
Page 16.
When did we move that up? Because in October, they were using, your estimate was the same as what it was in 2020. Just wondering what, we moved that up?
The 97,000?
97,000.
Do you want to leave it as it is?
No.
You want to take how much out?
Because originally, it was 704.
Follow with the bottom here.
I took away, like, I took away...
Well, you know, if you take 97,000 and divide it by our students, you're talking around $12 a student.
I'd be in your job.
Return to page 16. So, tell me again, Mr. Smith?
You take 97,000 divided by our number of students, you're around $12 a student.
Correct.
So when you start sending things home, a packet, even if you have to mail something to a student, it might not be there for a few days. Over the course of a year, this is peanuts.
Okay, well, I agree to leave it in there. So anything else on page 16? We're not touching materials of instruction, Mr. Pfister. Mileage and travel, page 17, we've already touched a few of those. Dual enrollment, we already know that was over budgeted by $1,000. And good for those students taking dual enrollment. No increases, anywhere else on?
One question you...
Sure.
The mileage, travel, meetings and conferences, those are all groups?
They're all already grouped, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I ask...
Yes, please.
Not really budget-wise, but this impact on the teacher of the year. How does that impact that program? Does that teacher still make appearances? And like, how would that be affected?
That's not a, is that a separate category for her?
No. Yeah, would the mileage and travel affect her?
I mean, we...
I don't know what they're going to do in terms of having them travel as much as they did. I don't have that information, they haven't shared anything like that yet. But if it's not a separate category, then it would be coming from here.
It's only 3,000. Yeah, it's 3,000, and that's reimbursable things for the teacher of the year for some of the events they go to. And actually paying the insurance on the car that they got as a free car for the use.
But I'm sure she missed some things that would normally have happened.
Toward the end of the year, this, for FY '20, yes. But we're still going to move forward with the teacher of the year for '21.
Okay. It'll just look very different than...
We haven't got word on how it's going to change. So sometimes they are meeting together, sometimes they are going to different speaking engagements. But I don't know what they're going to do just yet in terms of those.
Okay, thank you.
I would imagine that there will be something. I don't know if they're going to do some of it virtually.
Okay.
Just haven't gotten word yet.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Page 17, no other increases. Any other questions on that page? Page 18, we've already talked about the tuition of out-of-county placements, that's pretty much.
I just, I think, add home again, we've talked about it earlier, equipment funds to add to replace furniture and equipment in schools. You know, it was a 29, 7, 9, 13, 7, now we're not approving anything.
Correct.
We have to, I mean, things wear out. So I think we'd be very conscious, if we leave this at zero, that we earmark some money that's left over this year in certain categories to address that issue. that's left over this year in certain categories to address that issue.
I think Mr. Pfister said it the best, is that if something immediate comes up, you know, cafeteria table, God forbid, breaks, we have the fund balance to replace that table. It's not perfect.
I understand, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't get brought up at times, then I just, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but I just think it's something that needs to be addressed.
Okay, page 19.
Quick question, out-of-county placements, where are we on that?
Gave it to us at the last meeting.
You did.
Yeah, I missed that, that one, sorry. Yeah, no, it was, it was...
What are we up to?
It's like 51.
Only 18,000, I think.
Yeah.
18,000?
18,000.
Oh.
We only have, I think, three students that are placed elsewhere. I am waiting on a bill, if we have any, any bills from Department of Juvenile Services, I'm still waiting on that. Have the Office of Student Services looking into that, but I can't imagine it would make up to that.
We have 50,000 in there.
Yeah, but next year, I mean, you can see the history there. It, it varies.
Mr. Pfister?
Yes, sir.
Is this net of the money that we get for students that come here?
No.
Some other?
No, this is our expense.
Send somebody somewhere else.
And to send somebody somewhere else. We budget a revenue, so it's not net, but there is revenue that we budget on the revenue side, which is part of that $400,000 of other income.
Okay.
I mean, if it's nominal, it's not making up a step or a position.
Our school system is so good, people want to send their kids here.
So, uh, you want to take anything out of, out-of-county placements, Mrs. Morsette?
Uh-uh.
No.
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Anderson, do you want to take anything out of that? Okay. Age 19, okay, special ed. Moving on to 20, I think this is all. I know there's a $7,000 increase in other instructional positions, on home, hospital instruction. I think that is gonna increase exponentially, especially students who not want to come to our system with, uh...
This...
Special, special needs and, you know...
It's concerned.
Concerned. So, I think we should leave that one alone if everyone is amenable to that.
Which one?
The other instructional positions, the home and hospital instruction, people have immune systems, compromised immune system, they may want to stay. I mean, I see that number going up.
It's gone up 7,000.
Right, it's gonna go up more.
Over, it's gone up like...
Yeah, it's gonna go up more. There's a lot of students that are gonna want to stay home.
14,000 it's gone.
And keep in mind, this is only for special ed students.
Right.
You'll see, in Student Personnel Services...
There, there's an increase there, yes, I see that happening. Consultants, therapists, page 21, we've already addressed that, that we knew that was going to be increased.
It's your behavioral specialist that's reflected in your scenario, your one-page scenario.
Well, we had that, that also, oh, that's just in special ed, okay, you're right. The contract for the school psychologist and the speech pathologist follows under instruction, sir?
Psychologists would.
I forget.
Speech therapists fall under special education.
Okay, thank you.
But psychologists are under instruction.
Thank you. The, page 22, the five-by-four plan software, we, we had a presentation on that, correct? And we approved that 25,000. Address meeting and conferences, mileage and travel.
Correction, Ms. Harper, that is out of, I mean, we could certainly add it back, but it is out of the scenario, uh, that it was one of the recommendations, that it would be, as Ms. Morsette mentioned, the $7,000 for COMAR training, be one of those things that we have in place, and we will just hope to experience savings elsewhere, but it would not be budgeted under one of the current scenario.
Which one was that?
This, this year. The 25,000 for the software.
Okay.
So I just wanted to keep that in mind.
So that's a possibility to add back? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
On page 22.
I've already addressed that. Quick, okay, so, page 24, the non-public placements, so that's where we are, or possibly...
Yeah, again, it varies year to year. It's gone up dramatically. But again, both of these scenarios, it's listed in the document we've been going through on page 24, is not in your, one of the scenarios the executive team presented you. Both of those would be at current level. We would fund the increase in the Midshore Special Ed Consortium. Probably one more year, we could do that with our Medicaid, our third-party billing revenue that we receive. After that, we would definitely have to step up, and that would be a request in FY22 budget. And then as far as the tuition, we just hope that it favors us better in '21 than it has in '19 and '20.
So you're talking about the $130,000 increase in the special ed transfer?
And the 255.
They are both coming out?
They were both out of one of the scenarios, and one would, one will be covered with Medicaid funds, the special ed consortium, because it does provide direct services, that's most appropriate use of those funds. And the 255, again, unless you decided to add that back, that would be something that we would just hope to have better experience going forward. If not, because of maintenance of effort, we'd have to pay for it anyway, we'd have to find savings somewhere else, as we're doing with a lot of these budgets.
But we've had that, we've done transfers of that now, because we were short, weren't we?
Yes, yes.
So, I mean...
We also had cost savings in a couple other categories in order to cover...
Offset some of that.
Right.
The 230, we just did that at the last meeting. Okay, so, so as I understand it, the 130 is already out.
As is the 255.
As is the 255.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we can leave, certainly leave that amount if you desire.
And pray for better days?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good way of budgeting, pray for better days.
Yeah. Page 26, Student Personnel Services. Okay, so, most of this is just the salary enhancements?
Yes.
Okay. Page 27.
More questions, meetings and conferences. I know we have a big lump sum we're taking out there, but can we give guidance, since we have control of the budget, on out-of-state kind of meetings, that we just, we don't want to do those kinds of meetings? I mean, I don't know of anything that we would need to do.
I don't believe that that's, I, we've just taken a lump sum out, I just don't think that we really have control over who goes where. Well, we're taking the lump sum right now for the budget purposes, so the how is really up to them, how they spend the money that we give to them.
Right, we took 25,000 out of...
Meetings and conferences? Yes, so, yeah, just, let's, it's good, to my frame of mind. Page 27, we're across the board.
That little $500 increase is, is out also.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, on that page, the home, hospital, teachers, are we gonna look at...
Page 27?
Page 27. Possible increase because of the situation that could arise returning to school.
You referencing mileage and travel?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And, and as you, you see, we've...
Bare bones that one.
And, and across the board, you've already requested to take $20,000, not that this one particular line would be hit, but somewhere, we have to find $20,000 in your scenarios tonight, in mileage and travel. That one, I wouldn't recommend not.
Right.
But you, they're, they're gonna make that decision based on the...
Correct.
Okay.
And again, we have to pay it anyway.
Yes, we have to pay it anyway, because what they're getting when they're traveling. Page 29.
Here's your school health coordinator that is in the budget.
Right.
The balance is in fixed charges for benefits.
Correct. So, page 30, there's no increases there. Page 32. Is this where the one special education bus drivers come in? And then...
And that's reflected there with bus drivers, one plus O, 29.
Okay.
So this is in the budget, even though there's a, a decrease in overall salaries there in transportation, it's just how the salaries, takes you two years to catch up as far as people moving in and moving out, so...
So, this...
Does accurately reflect the addition of one driver.
So, okay, so this bus driver that's on here, Mr. Pfister, on your page here?
Mm-hmm.
This?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, this is here.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, very...
You're welcome.
And then I see there's a decrease in the bus, the drivers and bus assistants.
Yeah, it's just how the full-time salaries work out over the course of a year.
Thank you. Okay, page 33, we have negotiated contracts with bus drivers, bus contractors. We are already, Mr. Pender went through all of this about the bus inspections and the safety training, maintenance.
Yeah, and then, and then he's, as we've talked about over the last couple months, as we group them as transportation needs, operation of plant needs, maintenance of needs, technology needs, this was the result of those requests. So, if, as you're looking through it, certainly we could say, take the $7 bus inspection or the $8,000 in safety training, but you would need to be cognizant, because some of that money is being offset by reductions that Mr. Pender had put in the bu- budget, like bus repairs on page 34. So, some of them are offset, not that it, so the total increase in transportation in your request is the driver and some, about $20,000 in overtime, and then $40,500 in those myriad of 7,000, 8,000, minus 10,000. So, if, if we're gonna take out any of the adds, we want to be cognizant of the subtractions as well, because it's sort of a self-balancing thing there.
Where do we stand on the bypassing of the arm for stop-school buses? That, that presentation we heard a couple of weeks ago?
Bringing that to the July 1st board meeting.
It'll be at the July 1st board meeting of the presentation.
Oh, good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so, page 34. So, I, I have a question about the field trips. I know we have a $10,000 increase. Is it necessary to keep that there? Do we even think we'll have field trips?
We may, I mean, we may not. I'm sure we'll have something before the year is done in spring, but we may not, so if, I mean, if that needs to be reduced, then it'll be reduced.
So, 10,000 out of the field trips? Everyone all right with that?
I agree with that.
That's mainly, when it says field trips, it's athletic competitions is mainly what that is.
Okay.
And this one says, and college trips, so the college trips, right, would probably...
That's the add, 10,000 was for the college.
Most of it is athletic.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we, if we return to school with some of the scenarios, sports may still be happening. Are we still...
And, and, and we also talked about having sports delayed, you know, you might have a spring football or something. I'm just saying that, but, you know, or if something might, if it doesn't happen in the fall, it's still, want to give the children, or the students the opportunity...
Place holder to come out, not like it's set in stone yet.
But the extra 10 was only...
For college.
College visitations. I'm not sure they're gonna, they're doing it all virtual now.
Well, we don't know. We haven't gotten anything yet.
And come spring, they'll be making more of those visits.
Yes. Okay. Yes, Ms. Morsette, yes or no? 10 in or out?
Keep.
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 All right, we'll keep it. Bus operation, not touching that.
Just a question to understand. Insurance for buses provides liability, insurance for all buses through Maryland Association of Boards of Education. All buses, the LFCs, the...
No, sir.
Are just the ones we own?
County. Good question. Page 35.
Kind of interesting.
It's all interesting. Page 36, anybody?
It's a pretty big increase.
It is. That, that's the insurance pool that you were talking about, sir, the $20,000 increase? Are we, is that accurate, the 20,000 increase?
Mm-hmm. Look at our current cost, our current cost was $82,000.
That's true.
Well, last year's cost, this year, it's not going down, so this year's could be a little bit more.
Well, it makes, was there accidents? Was there payouts?
It's, it's in the pool, and, and Mr. Pender can certainly speak more eloquently than I could, but basically, we're in the insurance pool, so all of the risk is pulled together.
I understand that, it stabilizes rates, but we didn't have any accidents, obviously someone else did. It's, it's driven by claims.
Yes, so other school systems, we didn't have any major claims. Other school systems might have had some major claims, which pushed that up. For this upcoming year, it's pretty much gonna be remaining flat at what it was for last year.
Thank you, okay. Auto expense, everything else is pretty flat on that page?
Well, not to belabor this, but doing so, the actual for 2019 was 82,1, and the requested was 86,5, yet the increase was 20,000. But that's over the approved 60, uh, year before.
From the current year, sir?
We, we got hammered again with something we had no control over. Just pointing out that sometimes a little bit of lubrication in a budget, sometimes you need to find the money from someplace.
And that's why we're sticking with this 20 increase? Went to operations of plant, page 38, this is all...
So, staff salaries.
Staff and staff salaries in hand, and negotiated agreements. Page 39, no increases there. Page 40, this is a part of the cost of doing business that was given to us by Mr. Pender earlier, correct? The 30?
In some of this, we might be able to recoup with cares or those kind, that kind of money, COVID money. I mean, I'm saying I'm gonna change it, I'm just saying that's a possibility, right?
Possibility, but it would only be up to 75% of the cost, but that's going directly through FEMA, and we'd have to work through the county government to secure those funds. So we still have a lot of work and a lot of analyzing to do, but we're not gonna get 100% reimbursement.
Understand. I'm just saying maybe some of that'll...
So, the technology operational increases up here on 5,300, that is not here on operation of plant, correct? That's somewhere else?
No, that's probably part of that 10,600 dollar increase.
Okay.
Let's look at my detail, but I'm pretty sure that's what that is.
And that's...
And again, that's just, that's just the, the standard cost of software and supplies continually going up, as we talked about when you approved the MAKE agreement. There's a standard 2% to 3% escalator in most of our contracts with software and technology.
Thank you.
That was the one, we cut that in half, right?
Did we cut it in half?
Yeah, we, we cut it, yes, I'm sorry, you're exactly right, Dr. Kane. So it was 10,6 in your budget, and now in your reconciliation, it's 5,3.
It's 53, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
41, operations of plants, I only see the insurance on the vehicles, which we can't do anything about that.
I do, I, that was for, everything up to that point, I had mileage and stuff, so we're done with it.
Yes.
On this particular page, I was gonna ask Sid about the utility issue. We, we approved 21,09, I know that's real low, utilities right now, right, because of the buildings being, everything being closed down.[1674.16] And then, we've estimated, um, I'm sorry, let me see what has changed first. Yeah, 210, so that hasn't changed. And.
We want to keep it there, though?
I was gonna reduce that.
Utilities?
Yes. What? I was thinking of reducing that one, that was my only one on there. My question is, the average is, well, the year, the year before, it, I think I had the average of, between 2018 and 2021 was 2,079, the average, as Dick talks about, and we're asking for 210, 2109, 800, so it's about a $30,000 bore than what the average of the last 14 years.
Yeah, but the, here's another scenario to look at this. Of the five that we got actuals on, take the high one out, which is 2.5, and take the low one out, which is 1.9, and then take the other three, they're all around 2.1. So, you know, when you talk utilities, you're talking weather and a lot of things variables, so I see going from 2.5 to 1.9, that's $600,000 in five years. So I take the high one out, the low one out, and take my three middle ones, I'm all around 2.1, which is what we are, so I'm pretty comfortable with that number. That's the way out, that's, that scenario, just one idea.
Yeah, I wouldn't reduce this.
Mr. Anderson? Reducing operational utility costs?
So you didn't do really the average?
Well, you can, I mean, there's, there's, there's.
I did totally there.
Okay.
There's, I mean, if I take the average, then if I take the average for five years, I'm still around 2.1 probably, but, you know, I'm just looking at 2015, and we probably got a lot more efficient, probably put some thermal in somewhere, where we're 2.5. And then last, 19, the last good year was 1.97, so, but the other three years were 2.1, so that to me seems like a pretty fair number.
Okay, so, Mr. Smith, you are for not taking it out, anyone out? Mrs. Morissette's not for taking any out?
Correct, even with students not in the building, you still have to have some of these things running, so you don't have, so you have circulating errors, then you don't end up with other health issues when they do come back in the building.
It wasn't having to do, anything to do with students in the building, that my, my figures were anything to do with that, so, but that's fine, you guys leave 30,000 in. I'm trying to find places that we can save.
I'm not for taking it out, because I know we have a hard winter, and I'm gonna hear Mr. Pender squeal about how we have water coming through pipes, so, yeah.
You got a sale on snow shovels.
Yes. Okay, page 42. The custodial equipment, we've all agreed that, that's staying in, because we have no idea what we're gonna be needing for when the schools open up.
Yeah, because, I mean, we're here to cut this budget, which I'm all for. That figure right there could go, could go up drastically.
Yes, incredibly. The vehicle replacement, though, are we really?
That's out of your.
It's out of the.
Out of the, the, one of the reconciliation scenarios, this was just what was approved in your budget.
Okay, so this 12,000 is out.
Is already accounted for.
Okay, out.
In the, in the difference.
Thank you. Page, now we're at maintenance of plants. 44, that, page 44 is staff. Page 45, repairs to buildings, you went down $6,000, is that? That prudent?
Yes. But again, it was offset by some of the increase in maintenance contracts and.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was just some of the rebalancing that we did.
Okay, so then, so this maintenance contracts where it's up 28,000 is offset by the reducing the repairs of building at 6,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we, we have.
But then again, then that was cut in half.
Yes. Oh, so this is actually 14, though?
It's actually 14.
Thank you.
And on page 46, that is 20.
Okay.
That's reflected in your one-page summary, maintenance of plant, operational increases 34, this would be 14.
So repairs to buildings, page 46 is at 20,000?
Yes.
Page 47. Addressed all of these issues. Page 48, no increases. Fixed charges, page 50, which, yeah, retirement costs, FICA, tuition, tuition reimbursement, health insurance. Page 51. Insurance performance comp, liability insurance. The life insurance piece?
Yeah, the, the life insurance is in there, that's that huge increase that Mr. Anderson had talked about.
Okay.
The, the unemployment one, of course, concerns me, but we'll, we'll leave it as is.
Have we got any direction on that as far as?
I believe we can take a partial credit on our 941, but I haven't gotten any definitive answers on that.
Because you know, employers like myself, we have, I mean, they're not giving us any direction of how we're gonna be able to address it.
It's a 941.
It's a quarterly tax report that we send to the federal government on our withholdings from employees.
941 goes to state, and 940 goes to the federal government. Okay, so the life insurance and retiree costs, the retiree insurance costs are staying level?
Staying level, there, there probably will be a small decrease, because we did change our Medicare provider, however, on the offset, because of this Medicare provider, we wouldn't get as much revenue in on our retiree drug subsidy, so they kind of washed themselves out. I think I'll readjust that after we get through this year to see where we are, so you'll be able to see a decrease in some revenue, but you'll see a decrease in the cost for next year as well.
Okay.
So I recommend we leave this here.
So, with all this?
By my calculations, I've saved 118,973.
118?
Yes, ma'am.
I was.
Because we have to add back the 25, 250 for the.
504.
For the 504, and then I, I have 5,000, that last $5,000, whether it's in or out, that we had talked about, to custodial supplies. So.
Okay, so 504 has to be added back in, okay.
I have to, yes, because it was cut out of your scenario. If you want to go forward with that, or we leave it out? If we were to take that out, we will have saved 144,223.
It's two positions.
No.
Worth it.
And then we'll still have, if we use 2,000, $200,000 of the fund balance?
That's already in your scenario as well, so that doesn't.
Okay.
Reduce that 1.941 gap, so, let me just get you some numbers. So to get to the 144, 223, that would mean not going forward with the 504 plan software.
Where do we stand right now? How close, with all of this, how close are we, or how far away is probably?
That's what I was getting ready to add up.
Oh, good.
1.8?
Yeah. 1, 1,0797,651. Still left to find.
You said the fund balance is in here?
Already in it.
Yes.
Fund balance is in.
Up, up top, where it says fund balance negative 34, and the note to the side that we will use $200,000 of fund balance, and that use of $200,000 was also approved by the county commissioners.
200 is in, and we're at 1,000,000?
7.
7.
1,797, 1.8 million.
So, it didn't change?
No.
Totally didn't change much.
It is the cost of two positions. That's the point, that's important for us to say, it was a cost of two positions, which is important.
We know.
We're not close?
Okay, we know.
I'm surprised that we did all of this, and we, we've ended up in exactly where we started.
Well.
For, in fairness to Mr. Suster, I think you mentioned that earlier, a couple light meetings ago, that.
Yes.
You know, we can, we can Nickland, not Nickland dime, look for a thousand, a couple, but that's not the real nut we have to crack.
I'm not criticizing the exercise, I'm just saying that the result.
No.
Well, we, we all knew that going in, we were just trying to find a way.
86%, 86% of our budgets in salaries and benefits.
That's right.
And we're talking about people.
And Ms. Harper, if you throw in the Virtual Learning Academy, that brings it down to 1,639?
Not quite done there.
Okay. Did anyone else have anything else they wanted to bring up? That's, can be talked about in open session? I make a recommendation that we go into a closed session.
Second.
No, I haven't made the motion yet, I just think that we need to have a discussion, closed session about further.
We had this, we had this all worked out.
Um, yes.
It's up to you. Maybe we don't.
So that is a question. I'm willing to go ahead and make a motion, have a motion made to take all these cuts, and the 255 for the 504 back into it, just to show that, you know, we're making a good, I mean, we're making in good faith effort to get this budget down.
Just for clarification, are we adding back the money for the 504 plan, or leaving it out of your reconciliation?
504.
25.
25,250.
Explain that again, what we're going on, I'm not sure what you're saying.
The 504 plan? What, what it is, or, or?
So what do we, what do we?
So, so in this scenario, the 504 plan has not been funded. When we went through the line item detail, you added it back, but then there's been some discussion about whether it should stay, or whether it should further come out, because that's.
No, I was gonna make.
Obviously reduces your reductions.
I was gonna, just gonna make a motion to accept all of these deductions that we have gone through so far.
That's 117.
Just the deductions.
Just deductions.
Fine, I'm with you then.
So, do I have a motion to?
Do we leave out the Virtual Academy, let's talk about, I would say we talk about that later?
Virtual Academy has already been rescinded?
Right, but it's not in here as a reduction.
It was not discussed tonight.
Not discussed as a reduction?
It's already out. It was al- the vote to have it in has already been rescinded, so to, for this purposes, it is out.
Okay.
Right now, we are only discussing the decreases that we have talked about this evening.
We started with on page four.
Yes, so we started with on page four. So do I have a motion to accept all the deductions to the proposed operating 2020, 21 budget? All of them, do you have a motion?
I still want to clarify the Virtual, it's sitting here, it's on this.
We are not talking about that page right now, Captain Kelly, we're talking about the deductions that we just went through, the budget, starting from page four.
It's still sitting here.
It, we.
Just so you know, it is still sitting here.
And as I made a clarification.
Yes.
From the last meeting, the vote to rescind, the motion to have it accepted, rescinds it, it is rescinded, it's not in this budget. At the moment, at the moment, it is not in this budget.
Okay, right, I just want to make sure.
The motion that I'm asking for, the motion I'm asking for is to accept all the deductions to the budget, the proposed operating budget that we have just discussed. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, but could you please give, for the record, give me the number that we just reduced?
Without the 504?
Mm-hmm.
I was at?
144, 223.
I had more than that, hang on, sir.
I make a motion, we reduce, we do a discussion that we've done right in this evening, they reduced the budget by 143, 144, 144, 223.
223.
Yes, ma'am.